And welcome to the November 8th council meeting. The time is eight thirty, I'm sorry, seven thirty-two. Mrs. Sarcisi, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Verker.
Here.
Ms. Darrell.
Here.
Mr. Engel.
Here.
Mr. Martin. Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Muller.
All right, today I would invite Mr. Miller to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thereafter, Ms. Darrell will say the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father, we ask your blessing upon our residents, mayor, city employees, council, and throughout the world. Help us to perform our functions for our city whenever or wherever necessary. Grant that others within our community understand the work we are doing and the principles we each stand for. Help us in our daily decisions to better serve our community. And also, I like to say, to keep Jim Kreevar in our prayers, too, because he lost his mom, I guess, and I'm gonna cry because I think that's sad. And amen.
Okay, we're gonna move right along here tonight. And we're gonna go right into public comments. For public comments, you need to sign in, and you have five minutes. And tonight, we have Louis Townsend signed in. Lou, you're up.
How you doing, Mr. Townsend?
I'm good. Gentlemen, I've been quite busy the last few months working on things, but I have some questions in my mind. I'm gonna come here as a computer expert, because that's what I do. I have a company, Townsend Enterprises, and I do computer consulting and that type of work. I understand that Council has purchased some iPads for use for the city operations managers and also for Council. To my knowledge, iPad is not a computer. By definition, a computer has to have a hard drive and an input-output device. The iPad is a whole thing like this. No input-output device, has a touchscreen, and you have apps on it. And this is made by Apple. You can't fix it, and it has to be hooked wirelessly to the internet to work. I can't understand how something bigger than this can be useful in a regular application. Second question I have, the system that you're purchasing is not, like I said, useful. It's for games, for downloading toys, I mean, apps they call them. So in order to get something to work, let's say, a program to type in, you have to go to Apple, which is a separate company, and order an application to work that on there. But in order for this to work, it's connected wirelessly to a device. So if you got this, you really have no security. You go somewhere wirelessly and try to download some information or something important document for the city, anybody there can see it. If you got a wireless connection at home, that means you already have a computer. So I can't understand why you gotta carry this around. So the other part of that is that, I understand that these things cost the city over the $600 apiece. Right now, on the internet, brand-new Apple iPad II, very same thing, second generation, are selling for $349. So we're getting charged double what's the published thing. And if you bought them in quantity, I'm sure they'd be less. So I would like to see, really, the specification for this device that causes it to be used. I don't understand how this can be used for anything except playing games and toys. Secondly, this device here is called a notebook computer. This is full computer, has a hard drive and network connections, everything, Windows 7, and it's $179, which you can hook directly to your network, you can hook it to a monitor, you can hook it to anything. So, you know, and this can be repaired because of Windows. Apple stuff has to go back to their factory. So my question is, how do we support these devices? Suppose one gets broken and one gets stolen. Are we gonna insure them? Or if you get a virus on it, which you can over the air, who fixes it? You know, if your kid gets it and downloads something that shouldn't be on there, who's responsible? So I'm saying, number one, we shouldn't be going into the land of Apple for any kind of business application. It's just not workable. And secondly, I wouldn't recommend that, but secondly, we're paying twice as much. And these things, they talk about it, but these are made in China. So we're not even supporting American workers with these devices. Anybody tell you, you gotta pay for every single application you use. Why the Windows stuff? I'm a Windows professional. The Windows stuff is commonly available. You can replace everything in here, five minutes. So I don't understand, it's American-made. So I don't understand why we have this requirement. I never saw the contract, which is another thing. How does a person that's an IT person and minority, I'm supposed to at least see the contract? Maybe I want a bid on it. I sure can beat $600 bucks for these things. So I don't, you know, I don't really understand, I'm not criticizing, but I don't understand the requirement for the city to have these, basically, toys, these devices, to carry around. You can't do anything with it until you wirelessly connect it. So if you come in here and download something off our network, you can't do it. You gotta hook it to a wireless connection. Why this thing? You can just plug it right in. So you got security, you got things safe. This has 16 gigabytes of memory, which is like, a little bit. You could get that in a camera. These things have like 50, 500 gigabytes. So, you know, again, you don't have any security. It's called RAM memory. It only activates when you have it on, but you can't take it out, and if, you know, you can't load a, and some of these, that's another thing. Tablets, I can get you very same tablet for $79 now. The bottom is dropped out. With the iPad II, they found out they weren't selling because they were too expensive. They came out with another one that's a little bit smaller, that sells for $300. So, again, you're gonna venture into the land of internet and that sort of thing. First, you need to justify, and second, you need to look at how much you're paying for it. So I don't know what the city does with bids, but put the specs out on bid like they do with the government. Take the lowest and best bidder. But you're gonna have to teach people how to use this thing. While, you know, a regular computer, you don't have to do that. People know how to operate it. So that's all I have to say. I would appreciate it if, you know, someone would look into this, this contract, because you're paying twice as much for the same thing. Okay? That's all I gotta say.
Mr. Townsend, thanks for your comments. I agree with everything you said, and that's why I voted against it. I think it's ridiculous.
Well, you know, I'm not gonna comment on that, but when I saw that...
I just commented, that's how I feel.
I understand that, I appreciate that. I mean, it doesn't logically make sense, because I can't do anything with this thing. And it's all, you know, you got iPhone, as an attorney, I'm sure you have a BlackBerry, which has all your stuff on it. And this same thing here with the iPhone has all of this on it, plus you're connected to a phone line. But these things are worthless as far as business applications. Okay, thanks.
Sure. One of the main concerns, and I'm speaking for council, Lou, was the fact that records requests were being made so fast and furiously. There was concern, because many council people use their computers at home, and they could actually be confiscated. So when we went to look at, how can we not have this happen? Well, the city will give you something that that's all you do is you use this. We send police to deliver the legislation to every councilperson's house on Tuesday. They'll get the legislation all now on their iPads. The entire city hall is wireless. If you wanna talk about doing something for the city, why don't you talk to me how I can make this whole city wireless?
That's very easy.
Well, tell me how to do it. You come in and see me, because I really would like to give something back to taxpayers in the way of making this city wireless.
Well, my concern is, there's so many viruses out there, especially spiders, and there's a potential, if you're getting this stuff over the air and you're not plugged in, someone can steal these documents, you would never know it, especially secure documents. You had a computer, you come and plug into the network, it's secure. But if you're walking around, say you stop at Chick-fil-A, wirelessly, everybody in the place can see what you're doing.
Well, Lou, you know, we didn't reinvent the wheel on this. We're copycats, you know? So we saw what other communities were doing, and they said it worked very well, and that's what we did. And by the way, we bought our iPads locally, so that we would give one of our businessmen the business. We went to, and actually, they beat the state price on the iPads. And that's usually where we get that kind of stuff, from the state. So you have a lot of valid points, and I'd like to address them all for you, but just give me a call.
I'd like to help you with the training, because, you know, I don't think a lot of people are computer literate to be able to use this device, because it's basically made to download music and games and pictures.
Well, it will be linked to, everybody on this Diaz has an email account. And everybody on this Diaz is going to do emails on this, and every email goes through our server, and every email cannot be deleted. See, so there's where it came in, so that there would be no hanky-panky or missing emails.
Okay, I have one more suggestion. As you know, I commented with you, we have a Facebook account for the city as part of our network. I would suggest, why not have the councilman have a Facebook account on the city thing, so that if I wanted to talk to somebody without having a big phone, just be able to communicate with them through Facebook. We've got Facebook and Twitter that's already on our service. So why don't the councilmen put out what their Facebook account number is, or their Twitter account, so you can send them a document, rather than having to call them on the phone? That's simple. We can just put it out there, this is, you know, a Facebook account for Rita, and, you know, this will get to her, and you wanna send her a document, or she wants to send you a document, you can do that at home. That would help the taxpayer.
Well, just give me a call. Come on in and see me, because I really would like to find out more about that wireless. So we're gonna move on, though, because we got a very busy night. There's no more public comments for this evening, so I'm gonna go right into pending and/or new legislation, starting with ordinance number 68-2012.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to motion that we keep ordinance 68-2012 at its second reading.
Second.
Thank you. An ordinance amending the Business Regulation Code by adding new chapter 794 entitled Hotel, Motel, Security, and Safety.
Don't we have a meeting scheduled for this, or...
We do. We've combined the meeting on the 29th for the signs.
Okay.
Throwing that in there.
So there'll be a meeting on November 29th, starting at 6:30 or 7:00?
I think it was announced at 7:00.
7:00, where we will discuss this, and we're hoping that there will be, the various operators of the hotels will come in and give us their input, as well as, I think they've sent us some information over the email.
Right. The only thing I will add to this is, the first part of the meeting has been allocated to the sign, and that's where you're gonna have Mr. France and, you know, those people present.
Okay.
So whenever the discussion ensues regarding the motel, it's not programmed in exactly, so...
Come early and stay there.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Next is ordinance number 71-2012.
Mr. Mayor, ordinance number 71-2012, I'd like to keep it at its second reading by title only, please.
Second.
Thank you. And I know that you're all in favor of that. An ordinance amending section 117905, the codified ordinances of the city of Macedonia in order to prohibit all electric signs.
And again, on Thursday, the 29th, 7:00 PM, and council, I'm assuming council, work in caucus room probably, we'll have a work session on this, as well as the previous one.
Moving on to ordinance number 84-2012.
I'd like to offer ordinance number 84-2012 for its first reading by title only.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a three-year contract agreement with Julian &amp; Groob, Inc. for certain finance services.
All right, moving on to, is there any other motions or legislative actions this evening?
I'd like to make a motion canceling the regular council meeting of November 22nd, since that will be Thanksgiving Day.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Any other motions, legislative actions? Hearing none, we'll move on to correspondence from the clerk.
Oh, Mayor, I just have one, and this is to Chief Black from the United Methodist Church. Dan Walker, Small Groups Director, he's thanking the chief for over, trick-or-treat with the children, taking part in Thanksgiving events, trick-or-treat events, and with the fire truck, and how everyone was very, very happy and elated. And he always thinks it's the fire department for their cooperation. Did I talk too fast?
Yeah.
All right, I'll go slower. The United Methodist Church is thanking Chief Black for the fire department's participation...
You were talking a lot.
Okay, I will, Mr. Kronjak, I'll do better.
You know that.
Thank you.
All right, next is a very loud mayor's report. Ready?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I am told we're starting our second round through the city for leaf pickup. I've been asked to tell you to please bring your leaves to the tree lawn, so they will be picked up for sure. They're moving very, very quickly. There's like four trucks out there. It's really amazing, so don't miss it. You know, let's get it all up and out of here, so that we don't get snow on it, then it freezes, then it busts our machines. So this morning, we had our economic development breakfast, and we were at the Clarion in conjunction with our Nordonia Chamber of Commerce. The city brought in Chris Burnham from the Port Authority, Aaron Sybil from the County Economic Development Department, and Brian Ball and Joe Jenkins from the State Treasurer's Office. All of the speakers had much information concerning financial aid for our area businesses. Remember, healthy businesses are what we need to survive. The city income tax they pay runs this city, and they got a lot of good information out of that this morning, because there is money out there to be had, and they gave people phone numbers and help, so that they could get at it. You know, we were faced with none of our neighboring communities wanting to pursue the type of effort that was necessary to make a senior center out of our old city hall. We needed a Plan B. I'm very blessed to have a staff that's been able to think out of the box, and they keep coming up with ways to make it happen. I mean, no matter what it is, somehow, some way, my staff always makes it happen, so here's Plan B. We are going to allow seniors to enjoy our community room as needed. We have plans for a TV to be put in there to watch, and a smaller one that will be set up for playing Wii games. Seniors play Wii games, it's good for them. We will be ironing out the details of all of this, but trying not to reinvent the wheel. We plan to more or less emulate other communities, what they provide for seniors. We've got pamphlets and folders from different communities, such as Stowe, and we're gonna try and see, well, okay, they give bus trips, they play bingo on this day, they do this, they do that. Down in our community room, so that we wouldn't lose WIC, which is Women in Crisis, we allow them to use it every week. And we also have luncheons down there for our Silverdonians. That'll still be the same. But other than that, we will probably have hours from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and that room can be used on a daily basis, and there will be no charge for seniors, no matter which Nordonia Hills community they live in. We are gonna start renting the community room out again, like we did before. We'll rent it on weekends to the residents of Macedonia for birthdays, anniversary parties, showers, whatever. This will generate some funding to offset costs of our seniors using that room. My crew is jumping on board. We've had offers from our fire department's fair program to help with purchasing of a TV. We will, concentrating is getting, on getting as much donated as we can for this effort. As this goes on, we will be including Councilwoman Rita Darrell. We're going to be having meetings with ARP, we're going to be having meetings with our rec center, we're going to be trying to make this the best thing that we possibly can, as quickly as we can. You know, if you step back and you look at this plan, it gives the seniors something to use for gathering during the week. They will probably still have their big meetings at our Methodist Church, which allows them to hold their meetings at no charge. And I am telling you, I really appreciate them doing that. And then also, this will be something that the seniors will be able to enjoy quickly. We won't have to wait until we fix this or fix that. The community room is there. The community room is heated. The community room can be put to use. The city is, right now, in the process of looking for an assistant custodian. So we have staff coming in to help us with that. The seniors have promised they will help keep that place clean. We'll work out who's gonna be in charge. Somebody will have to be in charge, so that they can keep us all in the loop of what the seniors want. As far as my staff, you know, we have such talented people throughout this staff, and they are able to do so much, especially at the rec center. To them, this is old stuff. They've been doing this coordinating activities for a long time. So hopefully, we're gonna have just as good a program for anybody else. You know what? This is something that they've been waiting for way too long. We, Macedonia cares about its seniors, and we will make every effort to make their lives a little fuller, a little easier, and maybe a little bit better, too. Because being a senior in today's world, with the way things are as far as cost, we will do everything that we possibly can to make that just a little bit better. Tell your friends, tell your relatives, let's go over to the city hall and play a little cards. Or let's go there and bowl on the Wii. I don't know if everybody knows what that is, but I know the seniors love to play tennis and bowl on the Wii. Let's go over there and play a table game. Let's go over there and play a little bit of bingo. It's about time we did this. It's been needed for a long, long time, and I can't understand how we could go out and say, well, let's try getting them a building, and right away, it turns into something political. It was never intended to be political. I can understand, people are all worried about costs and a lot of unanswered questions, but the next step was just to sit at a table and talk, and we couldn't even get that far. All right. That ends my report today. The only other thing is that I want you to remember the number 601. It's a House bill that's been introduced that will affect collecting city income tax. So, you know, the state wants to be the people who collect the city income tax and then give it back to us. So like, when we say, well, where's our check from last February? They say, in the mail. It's an absolutely dumb, stupid, you know, you talk about messing with the good thing. The businesses want the state to do away with all city income tax. Macedonia has city income tax to support all of our services, because we still have taxes that come back from the days when Kennedy was president, as far as real estate operating tax. So this is a devastating thing, and believe me, I'll be doing whatever I can to join with other mayors, to join with other communities who collect city income tax to fight this. This could be, this could kill us, if this happens. Moving on. Do we have any committee reports? Hearing none. Any department reports? I have a report from Mike. I am just amazed at the amount of businesses that are going through remodeling and refurbishing, and oh my God, the list is so long, I couldn't even read it for you tonight. It's that long. Things are happening here in town, and that's all positive stuff. Of course, every single day, we get phone calls, when's Dunkin' Donuts opening? And every single day, we said, God, we hope it's soon. The city was all done with them, actually, they have nothing else that has to go through us. So I think what they're doing right now is they're training, I think they're looking at maybe the 11th, and boy, those donuts are gonna really taste good, because we really had to wait a long time. Angela, what do you have for us?
Just a few items tonight. I just have a reminder of two upcoming events taking place on the same day, but at two separate locations, on Saturday, November 17th. The first is breakfast with Santa buffet from 9:30 to 11:30 at the Recreation Center. It is $5 per person. Children under six eat for free. Santa will be arriving by fire truck to visit with the kids. It'll be a very nice event, but we do ask that you register in advance. The second event is our annual winter craft show, which will be 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, also on the 17th. That is free admission, and that will be held at the Epiphany Lutheran Church. Another reminder, a third reminder, that the Recreation Center will be closed on Thursday, November 22nd, for Thanksgiving. And finally, I would like to recognize a few members of my staff, Lillian Priszek, Tanya Caddy, Sarah Ulyssy, and Sarah Penn, who had to spring into action last week, and they made a life-saving rescue in our pool area. I am so very proud of them, and I'm very proud to have staff like that representing the Recreation Center and the city of Macedonia. So hats off to them. I just wanted to formally recognize them and thank them for the wonderful job that they did.
That was a wonderful job that they did. You're absolutely correct. Thank goodness. So, you know, we can have the confidence, when people are swimming there, that we have people there that can protect their lives. So Dave, you don't have to worry that you swim.
I wasn't worried, but thanks.
How long have these, it sounds like it was all ladies, how long have they been working for you?
One of them has been there since we opened, the other probably two to three years, and two of them, it was their second week.
Wow. So some good hiring practices going on over there, then? Good.
Yes, that's true. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, on our BORMA health insurance, we're seeing an increase this year of 4% over the plan, and last year, they passed on 1.5, and the year previous is 5.5. But I want to point out, though, when we joined the pool, we saved over $200,000 when we initially started from that. And we're in the year three of our final year for the BORMA pool, and we'll have to shop out. shop out. We wanna aggressively look at quotes this next year before it ends, and decide if we can shop out and find a better plan to fit our needs. The Hartford Life Insurance, actually, the renewal quote for that, which is a small amount as far as dollar, we spend $4,756 a year for a benefit for the employees, they have a $25,000 life insurance, and it includes a line of duty benefit for the police and fire department upon death. But the price we pay for that is $4,756, and they wanted actually a 43% increase, which would bring it up to $6,817. D, our HR person was in charge, and she shopped out, and she went to Standard and Fidelity and Cigna, and also looked at BORMA, they provide life insurance benefits as well. And by doing so, she actually saved 8%, so we'll have our renewal will be less than the $4,756, it'll be $4,371. So we actually saved $400 by them trying to increase the premium so much on us, we looked at that, and so that was good news. But again, one of the, with the health insurance costs rising, I consider 4% considering some other renewals, pretty good in this market. But we plan on aggressively going out and looking at two or three different vendors, getting a quote, and I know we have an insurance committee that'll be making sure the benefits are parity. But we're gonna start early in this, so at the end of next year, in 2013, we'll have everything in line, and that'll have the employees having to fill out additional censuses, so we can go out to bid competitively with those plans. That's the only thing I have at this time.
And that's a good thing. You know, paying taxes sucks, okay, so everybody agrees on that. But if you pay your taxes, and the people you pay them to keep shopping around, trying to get the very best deal, that has to give you a little confidence in where your tax dollars are going, where they're being spent. And I am very fortunate to have you, and Dee, that spends so much time to make sure we're getting the best deal. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, John?
Just a couple things, Mayor, on the leaves. Excuse me. Don't push your leaves into the street, it is illegal, and the service department may pass them over. So keep them on the tree lawn, your grass won't die, they're making their passes real quick, they'll come up and get them, so please, don't push your leaves in the street. And secondly, we've had some break-ins in cars overnight. If you leave your car out, it's not in your garage, all you have to do is lock the doors. 99.9% of the time, they're gonna pass your car and go up to the next one. So if you have a car outside, just lock the doors. That's all you have to do. That's all I have, Mayor.
Very good. Chief Tim Black isn't here tonight, but I know if he was, he'd be reminding us that the pancake breakfast is this Sunday. From 8:00 in the morning? Yes, 8:00. Oh, hi, Rob. Yes, okay, very good. We did well. All right, moving on to unfinished business. Any new business?
Motion, Attorney General.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming.
That's because he's seen his...